Hey, you had your chance.
Dex.
Oh God, we come before you with our gratitude. We thank you for being in God's love. We thank you for making each of us in this very room. Every person we meet and every citizen of this city. Thank you for the calling we've given every one of us to love our neighbors as ourselves. Thank you for these servants, our city manager and city staff and our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen on our behalf. We all come to this room carrying burdens, carrying joy, hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together in your love and peace. And we pray for wisdom, your strength, and the courage to do what is right and good for our citizens. May we put the interest of others above our own and act as well recognizing your energy in every other person. Jesus, say amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This is Gus Gilson, our head straight judge here in the seat, and he is here to swear only three of our council members, otherwise the meeting will be very short. We're glad they're here and for those who are being reformed here, I guess. Gus?
Congratulations for getting to this point. Because we have before you, instead of your opinion, I will just state the oath and then at the end if you will just answer in the affirmative, I do or I will. Would you all raise your right hand? Do you, Michael Oden, Danny Wadsworth, and Cortez Warrior solemnly swear that you will well and truly perform the duties of council of the City of Manchester to the best of your skill and ability? And as to you shall seem to be the best interest and welfare of said city without fear, favor, or affection, so help you God? Do you further swear that you are qualified to hold set office and that you do not hold any office of trust under the government of the United States, the State of Georgia, or any foreign state which by the laws of Georgia you are prohibited from holding? Do you further swear that you are not the holder of any unaccounted-for public monies due to the City of Manchester? And that you will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the State of Georgia?
Agreed.
Congratulations.
We have a little bit of paperwork here to sign and then we will get on. Thank you so much for attending. I think this is a time that is critical in our city. And I think this group that we have, we're missing a seat. Our council member-elect, Don Brown, is actually in attendance today, but he will have to wait until it's time to swear him in also. But I think this group is a very, very strong group. And we're going to be able to do many, many great things here in the next few years. Make our Manchester the place that we want it. If you look at the first item, our minutes from the last meeting. Sorry, the agenda, which I'm looking at, that was the problem. Our agenda, do I have a motion on the acceptance of the agenda?
I'm making a motion, we certainly agree.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on accepting the agenda for tonight's meeting. All those in favor? And then the agenda is accepted. So we're looking at the approval of the ordinance. We sometimes have a lot, so we do have a time limit on it, and there's a three-minute limit. And as far as matters of discussion, general discussion matters are perfectly fine and issues. The naming of particular grievances against particular individuals or employees of the city, we are not able to discuss those. Those go to an executive session, so it would first be handled by the city manager. So as long as the specific names are not mentioned, that's the rules we got in place here. So.
Alright, so I'm here to address some concerns I have with myself and citizens of Manchester, Georgia. I want to point out first that I've already contacted the city manager and the chief of police. I have received a response back in regards to my complaint. I have received a response back from the city manager, but it was not about the complaint. So my issue with the police department is that they're not properly handling or following up with the complaint that the citizens are sending in to the police department. Since a particular officer, since we can't name anybody, since a particular officer has started to get hired, which I'm not sure even how he got hired, there have been more citations, there have been more complaints, there have been more arrests since before he came. I have never received a ticket in Manchester in over ten years, all of a sudden this officer, now I just got two tickets within a month of each other. And I don't even think officers give out a ticket for tag lights. I just got another ticket for that. And that's going to be part of my next complaint I'm sending in. There's been retaliation, there's been harassment, citizens provoked the citizens to arrest people who've never been arrested before. Getting arrested in Manchester, Georgia, and nothing, never been on their background. And this particular officer, I want to know, I want to see if we can check into the background of the hiring process. Because if this officer got terminated from another department for a sense of use of force twice, how did he get hired in Manchester, Georgia? How do we let somebody patrol citizens of Manchester? Those are the basis of my complaint. How the handling of complaints not being followed up on. And of course, people are scared to do complaints because they're going to get targeted or retaliated against, like myself. See how many tickets I just got within a month of each other because of me complaining about this officer's going to leave and to the police department. So now I got, I spent all this money for a ticket because of me calling all the officers. And that's pretty much, I have the city manager not probably, not even following up the Matthew M. complaint, city manager or the chief, which I've already went to. I want to make it clear, I want to make it clear that I've already been to both those individuals. And I just want to point out that there have been more citations again, more complaints and more arrests since that officer been hired. And these people saying, for another example, people headlight being out. They'll get out and check their headlight, and the headlights work. So he just brushed it off and tell them move on about the day. So he's stopping people for all these crazy reasons so he can get arrested. So when he gets arrested, he can certainly be helped with all of them both. And I just, somebody has to, because I'm not going to stop. It's not going to be over until this officer is something done to him. We need a process in place or something, but this is out of control. I've never, I've never had, I've never even had to come to the city council for a police department. I've always supported the police department. And it's crazy. That's all I had. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. I have a presentation in the Manchester Community Building. There's been a lot of work on putting together a grant proposal to remodel that building. And so I wanted the firm to come and show us our current renderings and exactly what's going on with the new Manchester Community Building, which will become an event center, but also a lot of education center.
Who's going to shoot? Good evening, everyone. My name is Don Wiley. This is Audrey Plummer, the historic tourism and architecture firm of Atlanta. And we've been hired by the City of Manchester to take a look at the historic Manchester Community Center, which is just less than a block from here. And look at what it could be, how it could be improved, what problems it currently has. And we're here to present our findings and the proposed design. So like I said, it's very close to where we are now, right in the historic downtown Manchester. And we're currently looking into getting a grant to fund the renovation. And so we're really in the early stages. This is not a final design, but in order to get the grant, we needed to define the scope of work. And so that is what we have to show you today.
Like I said, I'm Audrey Plummer. I think you've seen me here before on some other projects. There's a lot going on in Manchester right now, which is very exciting. And one of those is the Manchester Community Building. This is a historic structure. It's one of the FDR Works Progress Administration projects built in the mid-1930s. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. So this is, you know, this is a key piece of Manchester's history. And we want to preserve it and enhance it and make sure that it, you know, it was intended to be a community building. So it needs to function for the entire community, for everybody in Manchester. That's kind of what we're here to look at. So here are some historic plans of the building from the 30s. Again, meant to be a community space with a gym, a stage. Our initial findings, you know, we went out to look at the site. We also had a building envelope consultant go out to look at the site and of course, our structural engineer. We were wanted to get a sense of kind of what we were dealing with, with this old building. A few areas of concern, generally it's in really good shape for its age. You know, structurally, there's a lot that we can work with. We've definitely seen historic buildings that are in way worse shape. You know, we don't have a tree growing through this building or anything like that. Guess that's it. So things to know, you know, the site generally is kind of underutilized. You'll see as Don gets into the design, we do take a look at that. This is kind of the existing conditions, some drone photos that we had taken. Again, pretty good condition, but there are some areas of concern, especially when we get to the interior of the building. Let's see, one, let me go back to the, the one thing is that there were some modifications made to this building over the years that have kind of not destroyed the historic nature of the building, but you know, we kind of want to bring it back to what it was historically. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. Heading into the interior, one of the main things we're seeing kind of throughout the building is some water damage. We understand that there was a renovation that was done in the 1990s that kind of addressed some of the roof leaks. But we are still seeing that water damage on the inside. You can kind of see at the stage, a lot of the plaster walls is kind of crumbling. Not active leaks on the, not active leaks on the interior, at least on the upper floor. But there is some damage that we, we need to address, like around this kind of wood trim, we've got the plaster. The other thing is that the building isn't quite, you know, it does have that big assembly space that I understand people use for family reunions, funerals, after, things like that. But there are some spaces that it could be that are utilized. It's not quite as efficient as we'd like it to be. When we get down to the basement, that's really where we see a lot of those water intrusion issues. So back in the 1930s, obviously, they don't know what we know today as far as how to detail a building to keep water from coming in. So we are seeing quite a lot of water intrusion at those building foundation walls that are, you know, they're.
For the grade is really high.
Right, yeah. And so we're seeing again, the plaster's cracking, we're seeing a lot of rot. Not anything that's, that can't be fixed, but it does need to be addressed. And we'd like to address it as soon as possible because the longer you wait on these things, the worse and more expensive they're going to get. This is a really unique building. One of the things you'll see from some of the images are because of the bleachers that are on the main level. When you get down into the lower level space, currently that's used for storage. But you do kind of get these very unique spaces where the bleachers kind of come up at an angle. You get these high-volume spaces. So it's really interesting, really unique spaces, so we do want to take advantage of that.
And the natural light that they provide into the basement.
And one thing, let me go back a couple slides. So on this exterior, I know everybody likes to park at the, you know, along the side. We definitely parked there today, but that wasn't really the historic grade. And so because the grade has been raised there, it's doing a few things. It's blocking off the natural light into the basement. Most importantly, it's causing water to come in right at this brick wall. The brick wasn't designed to have grade up against it. And so now that there's several feet of grade against it, again, you're getting a lot of that water intrusion. So let's go back to, so at the exterior, again, mostly the brick's in pretty good shape. The building envelope consultant, you know, he's seeing a lot of just over the years, wire, pipes. There's some rebar that's sticking out. We kind of want to, want to address those issues just again, to keep it, keep it maintained, keep water from coming inside. Here's some photos of the exterior. Again, mostly in good condition. Areas of concern are kind of at these window wells that were added around the windows. It wasn't designed to have this much grade against that brick. So this is, this is an area of concern. Another big area of concern that's really a safety issue is at the top of that chimney. You can kind of see how bad that brick and that caston is. And those are actively loose and falling, and that could really hurt somebody. So that, that needs to be addressed kind of as soon as possible. Other issues that again, aren't necessarily huge safety issues, but they just kind of, you know, they're not historically appropriate. They do kind of impact that historic cemetery that we want to preserve that was the intent of the building. So the current ADA routes and how wheelchairs get into the building, they kind of disrupt the cemetery with the thud. And you can't quite see it in this photo. You can kind of see it in its elevation. This door was added in the 1950s, we believe, to serve, I believe there's a library down there. Yeah, that's, that's not historic, so we kind of want to see that in a different way.
And one of the things that you'll talk about is as we apply for this grant money to fund the project, that is one of the things that we are going to have to consider. It's the historic significance of the changes that have been made and the changes that we will make. So this isn't just, we need to make it look better, but that will be a requirement in order to get the funding.
So we did, as I've mentioned, we did have a structural engineer come and look at it. He provided a report, which we have a copy of somewhere in our files. But these are just kind of the key points. There was a fire, we kind of touched on some of them. There was a fire in, we believe, the 1950s that did some damage. They did try to repair it in the 50s. And for the most part, their repairs are fine. We don't have to go back and re-repair anything. However, there are a few spots in the basement, under the gym flooring, where it looks like they just kind of chopped out a burnt bit and nailed a little piece in. We can't do that, so that's going to have to be, if then that's going to have to be fixed. So there's a few spots like that, the bleachers need a little bit of structural repair. But as we said, for an almost 100-year-old building, it's in pretty good shape, which is great. Again, building envelope, I think I touched on the main issues. You can kind of see some of the key areas of concern, like rebar. We don't want to see it's those rebar like that, you know. There's some water damage that we want to fix, but you know, nothing that's not impossible to fix by any means. And again, as Don mentioned, there, because we will potentially be getting money for this grant that's through the federal government, you know, we will have to comply with Section 106, which deals with historic buildings. And then of course, all of the need for requirements. And again, both of those have a public engagement process. You're going to see us back here again. And it's also going to be a chance for, you know, people to provide additional input. Building programming, so there are three things that we want to do with this building. So one, we want to create a space for education. Two, we want to save the building. And then three, we want to create an event center that works for everybody in the community. When we talk about education, you know, Manchester is, you know, compared to Meriwether County, compared to the State of Georgia, we've got higher poverty rates, we've got lower income, we've got higher rates of, or sorry, we have lower rates of adult literacy. So there is a need for education services, workforce training, workforce development in this area. And that's part of what that grant, which is through the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission. But you know, they want to look at, they want to invest money in places that really need it, and Manchester definitely needs it. The other thing that we're looking at, why we want to put an education center here. As you can kind of see on this map, you know, we're kind of in a zone as far as community college, as far as education, higher learning. We do have that, there is a facility in Greenville. Unfortunately, it's not, you know, they offer maybe one class, but it's COVID, it's kind of, they haven't really been offering much. So if you're trying to, you know, attend any of these classes, excuse me. If you're trying to attend any of these classes, like, you know, we're talking, you have to go to the grain, you have to go to noonin'. If you don't have access to reliable transportation, you know, that's far, you can't really get there. And so we want to provide a space in Manchester that can serve people that actually live here, you know, that people can actually access.
And a community center is in the walkable downtown, and so that also activates the downtown area, bringing people to there, walking around, really helps.
And so we're going to partner with West Georgia Technical College. At the Regional Commission, they've already pledged to, the West Georgia Technical College has already pledged to bring their programs to this education center. And it provided that we do the renovation. So they'll offer things like high school equivalency programs, adult literacy programs. You know, they'll partner with, if you need vocational training, they're going to have two computer labs. If you need to be tested for certification. So they're planning on offering a pretty robust program for folks in the area. Also, Three Rivers Regional Commission is going to have an office there. They're going to offer things like training for soft skills, you know, linking people to employers, job training, services. They, Three Rivers also offered, they have a transit service, which would help people, you know, who need reliable transit kind of get to the center and access these services. And again, they've already pledged to be participants in there, also actively helping us on that grant application. The next thing that we want to do again, we want to preserve the building, save the building. Again, it seems like it's in great condition, you know, not super-conditioned, but it's serviceable now. And it could hang on for another decade. But what we don't want to happen is what happened in Greenville. So they also had a WPA building. Unfortunately, it was not maintained. It did, the roof did collapse in 2006, and they were unable to save this building. So we don't want that to happen here. Now they have a parking lot as opposed to a community space. It was intended for the community, we want to keep it for the community. And then the third thing that again, we want to do is create that community event space. We understand from talking with Tangi at the Recreation Department, that there's kind of a lack of space for people to rent for events, especially smaller spaces, like if you're trying to have a baby shower or a birthday party, you may not necessarily want to rent, you know, a huge space for a thousand dollars. Maybe you want to rent a smaller room. And so we want to be able to offer flexible spaces at different price points, different sizes. Again, we're trying to serve everybody in the community. And again, there's a precedent for this. So there's another WPA building in Carrollton, Georgia. They've done pretty similar to what we're trying to do, minus the education component. But they again, have a big, theirs is only one room. We're proposing three, three big spaces and then several smaller spaces. But they renovated their building and they rent it out for five to six thousand dollars a month. That's their revenue that's coming in. So this is a big revenue generating opportunity for the City of Manchester. And again, it offers that space for people to, you know, hold their community gatherings. And now Don's going to tell you how we actually plan on doing that.
And I guess the other point I want to make is not only would it serve the community, but with a renovated event space, it could draw people from, from other counties, from wide beyond the community, which would create more revenue for the community. So with the building design, Audrey did a good job of talking about what we would like to do with the space. Here is the list of things that we have learned from the City of Manchester and talking with Tangi and others and Mark Polia about what, what functions need to happen in the center. And also, we talked to West Georgia Tech about what they would need to run their program. And so this is what this list is talking about. So not only would we like to focus on providing community space for events and also the education, but we'd like to showcase the history of Manchester. There are a lot of different artifacts, there's a strong history with this building, there's a strong history in the city that we would like to present in the lobby space. And so that would also be a component in branding the space, to tell the history of the downtown area and the area, to tell the history of the railroad, the mills in Manchester. There's a lot of rich things to draw on that we'd like to showcase there. Kind of everything we want to touch on on this list. So let's start with this space. So as Audrey mentioned, the current lobby space is really small. You couldn't really have an event there. But the way that we're trying to envision the lobby space is to expand it so that that could be a pre-function event if you were having a wedding, or you could just bring it out separately for a small conference, a community meeting, even something like this. Well, I guess the city council needs to have a, a size like this. And so in envisioning that, we would expand the current wall of the lobby out towards the larger event space. So that would make a bigger event, event space for the lobby. And we would take out some of the bleachers that are currently existing. So you would still maintain enough so that you would have the historical significance in the larger space. It would still look very much the same, but you would gain more functional lobby. Also in the lobby, we were told that you guys need more storage in the, can you say, for tables, chairs, different event furniture. And so we've added a larger storage space to help house that. We also have two ADA accessible restrooms in the lobby space, with larger restrooms down below. And so anyone who needs to get to a restroom at the same level as the event space can use the restroom, but most other people would go down below. And that helps us keep more square footage in the lobby. The other things I want to point out, which may be hard to visualize in this view, but will be easier to visualize in some of the three views later, is we have two triple-height atrium spaces. So that means that on either side of the lobby, we've opened it up so you get more natural light in there. Right now, we don't get any natural light. And you have an airy triple-height space that's open to the lobby and the education center select. And so keep that in mind, when we go to the next slide, we'll be able to visualize it. Here's some of the inspiration images that we have. So you know, we have this low-barred brick building that has a beautiful brick wall. And there is precedent for renovating these buildings to expose, you know, really highlight that feature. And so as Audrey talked about, this section of the building is really unique. So when opening up the two sides of the lobby, you're going to see that section, you're going to see the unique structure of the building. And so keep these images in mind as you move through, because this was kind of our inspiration for, for opening up this building. And so this reading, and it shows you looking across the lobby. So this would be an atrium space on this side and kind of use another atrium space. So this is the restroom corridor that we talked about, the storage, and these are the front doors. This is looking down into the atrium space. So as I said, right now, you don't have any natural light or windows in that lobby. So when opening this up, you're going to get that natural light and really open it up. This is the stair that we talked about that goes down to the lower level lobby and the education center. And these would be a perfect area to do some of that historical branding that we talked about, to tell the story of Manchester. So these gray areas, that would be the perfect place to hang historical banners and present some of the history and the facts about Manchester. So looking from this view, you're in the lower level education center. This is the ADA entrance into that center, which you can still through the lobby space. So it creates a really nice connection between the two. And makes the, the lower level not feel like a basement, but really a celebrated space. And so this is a building section. So if we cut directly through the lobby space, you can see this is the lobby here. And these are the two atrium spaces on either side. can see, this is the lobby here, and these are the two atrium spaces on either side, and the stairs lead down to the lower level of the education center. Now back on the main floor, you can see this is the main event space, and we've added a catering kitchen, which would help make that event space more functional. Right now, it's really hard to have an event if you're not able to keep food warm or cool and serve it. And so that really limits the type of events and the way you can have events in the space. We're adding the catering kitchen where there's currently a green room for the stage, allow that to be more functional. On the other side of the stage, we have a stair that leads downstairs, and we have a green room or a room for a bride or getting ready. So again, we're thinking, how do we make this space more functional and bring it up to date while still keeping the historical significance and look in the main law, or in the main event space? Oh, as far, as far as the, the number of occupants, we are estimating that you can hold an event and seat up to, what was it, one hundred and, one twenty-eight for a seated dinner, which is a pretty significant amount. I mean, most weddings, I think, are between a hundred to three hundred people, and most of the time, all those people don't sit at the same time.
Obviously, you can have more people when they were just, you know, standing.
Or sitting on the bleachers. Are there any questions?
What we also want to do is, you know, especially on the main level, we have a lot of historic trim, the historic gem floors. We want to keep all of that, we don't want to lose any of that history. Because you know, part of this scope of construction is going to be refinishing all of those, and if there are pieces missing, you know, carefully trying to either find similar materials or recreate that, because we, we do want to preserve all that history. That's it.
So this is looking into the, not entirely changed, but possibly a little bit smaller current event space. And this is a section cut through there, so you see the lobby that we talked about, the storage area, and then the main assembly or event space there below. And the stage will stay the same as its part of the storage section. Here's another section. Now down below, where you could see in the three views that I showed you earlier, we have an entrance, because we have an ADA entrance, and Audrey mentioned that the entrance that's currently on the side, one is not exactly ADA accessible, and two is not historic. So moving it around the corner, moving off of the front facade, a source of symmetry that would have been difficult when it was built. And, and we have a nice concrete ADA ramp that leads you down. Instead of just having kind of like a long major ramp, we kind of utilize a terrace effect to bring people down in a more celebrated, kind of interesting way. And so this would be a student lounge where people can sit before the classes, they can use the wifi, they can study, they can have small meetings, or meet with a professor, or bookwork classes. And then we have two controlled entrances into the classroom area. So while the student lounge would be open, because people from above would need to use the residence, from above, the access to the classroom, the computer lab, the offices would all be controlled access. And so here's another view, now that you've seen the lower level lounge of the lobby area and the open atrium. So you're bringing the natural light into this lower ceiling space that really makes it feel special and not just kind of a dank space. And then this is the ADA accessible ramp that we talked about. All right, and then, as we mentioned, the program that West Georgia Tech would need, they kind of gave us a few different requirements, how many classrooms they would need, offices. And so this is looking at meeting those requirements and actually going beyond what they said they would need. So this would not only provide classrooms for what they needed, but potentially other programs, different community uses, et cetera.
For if a business wanted to run out of rooms for weekend for training, they could do that here. We're also kind of intending that the partitions between the classrooms could be flexible, so you could take them out, put them in, if you need one big space, or if you need several smaller spaces. So really kind of envision this as a flexible, flexible space that can be used for a variety of uses. You don't really get a lot of banker, but.
And then here's a view of the unique section that you get in the classroom. So you see this sloping area here where the ceiling slopes up under the bleachers, and you get natural light into the classrooms. So even though the ceiling is pretty low at the lowest point, you do get some, some airiness and, and the natural light. Do you want to talk about the site design?
Yeah, so the site design, as we mentioned, you know, this is kind of what the site currently is, we've got the building, and then we've got quite a lot of parking. And again, this grade was not original, it was never intended to be this high. So again, we've got several feet of dirt against brick that wasn't designed to handle it, both from a structural standpoint and then from waterproofing. So it's just pressure against the brick, and then it's water that's just hitting the brick, coming down, hitting the concrete foundation wall, and then just pouring into the building. So we don't want to spend a lot of money, you know, creating this beautiful education center only for six months, you know, the whole thing's filled with water. So we do need to address that, and we have, you know, kind of a creative way to do that. One thing we're proposing is to, instead of having the parking there, lower the grade so that it's below the finished floor level, and putting a linear plaza there with some planting areas. And so that's going to give you yet another revenue generating event space and a community space, and just give it some curb appeal. And again, also, you know, we'll keep the ADA parking spaces there, because we do want this to be accessible to people with lower mobility. But we kind of want to reorient that ADA entry to come into the side of the four year code, so that we can restore the symmetry at the front of the side. And also, you know, we, we do need to get folks who are lower mobility or in wheelchairs around to that education center. So we've also kind of rerouted the sidewalk so that people can access that easily, and it doesn't feel like you're kind of coming in a backdoor at an alley. Now I know everybody's always like, the parking, and yes, we're going to take, so we are going to lose eight spaces, we are going to keep the two ADA spaces, but we do want to point out that there's quite a lot of parking in this area. So we've got several on-street parking spaces right in front of the building that are going to stay as is. There's all that parking on Main Street, and then there's that public lot, that's a hundred and eight spaces. So if you're having a wedding, a big event, you know, there's plenty of parking. And then again, you could potentially, if you needed to, either it's a four-minute walk to that public lot that you guys already have, or you could run kind of a small shuttle service to that. But, you know, we feel like taking out those eight spaces, you know, you're gaining quite a bit from losing those spaces, including a, you know, a community space and a space that you could rent out for more income. And it's also going to solve the water intrusion issues, it's going to get you more daylight down into the classroom. So it really does solve quite a lot, and, you know, the linear plaza, you're going to get quite a lot with that. And again, we, we have to do something about the grade against that, against the side of that building. We can't just leave it as is. So, you know, even if we didn't have the linear plaza, you're still going to kind of lose that parking, just because we have to get the grade off of the building. It just isn't designed to handle it. So again, we think that putting that linear plaza there, you know, doing that work to remove the grade, remove all that dirt, you know, you're going to get something in return that can generate income and provide a nice space, and it's just going to look a lot nicer. So looking at the site plan quickly, I think we touched on most of the high points. You know, we're going to put the, any mechanical equipment, because this building needs full overhaul of mechanical systems, plumbing systems, and electrical systems. So all of that that's in there, we're planning on taking all of that out and coming in with all new. So, you know, we'll have to put those mechanical units somewhere. We're looking at using that boiler building and then kind of that rear kind of asphalt with space for that. We're also looking at, at the catering kitchen. Currently, there are steps going up to that door, we want to put in a ramp, have a loading zone, just to make it more functional. Again, we touched on the linear plaza, and then just some rerouting of the sidewalk, just to make sure that everybody can get to that entry. Here's a view of that plaza that we're proposing. Again, it's going to be a few feet lower than what the current street is. So it's going to be a nice event space, it'll be a little bit protected from the noise of the traffic, you know, from the tiny elements. You know, what we're kind of envisioning is that there's kind of this thick little kind of pinkish granite that you see all around this area. So if we could find something similar, put that on those low sidewalks, you know, that's going to make you a really nice space. You could use it for a cocktail, you could use it for a community event, you know, after a birthday party, barbecue, what have you. And then planting, again, is just going to give you some shade in the summer, protect you against some of the traffic, noise. So we think this would be a really nice space. And again, you know, now we're, apparently, those window wells are kind of up here. And so just again, taking that grade off of that brick is really going to help with the water that's coming in. Here's an axon of the proposed, what we're proposing at the alley. So again, new loading ramp at the catering kitchen, and then reworking that entry, this would be a new door to the education center. Just making sure that it's celebrated, making sure that it doesn't feel like a backdoor. You know, we want it to feel like you've arrived to this wonderful education center that we're creating. And then here's kind of a general look at what we're proposing as far as programming. Again, really looking at assembly, events, party that pop, education, computer labs, classrooms, and then a few offices in the lower level. So next steps, as we mentioned, we are trying to go for a grant that's worth six hundred thousand dollars to help fund the construction. It's due in a few days, we're in the home stretch, keep your fingers crossed, because we, you know, every little bit helps, and this is quite a lot of money. We do also want to explore other grant opportunities. We've been hearing from others, and others, both local and the area that you have a really good chance of going for. The other thing that we need to do is start scheduling tests for those sleds, bowls. We kind of want to know if we're going to be dealing with that upfront, because those could potentially be a high cost item. Right. Right, and so, you know, starting to get that remediated. The other thing we need to do, we are proposing to put a sprinkler in the ceiling, it's just so large, and because we have the education component, per code, we're going to have to have that sprinkler. So we kind of need to perform some additional tests on the water pressure in the area, just to know, kind of equipment wise, what we're really looking at as far as, you know, equipment for the sprinkler. We also need to do some scoping of any underground utilities, you know, kind of just to see where they are, what we're dealing with, what the size is, can we reuse it, do we need to go all new? And then, that we need to do is bring a general contractor on board, and I say, we're really too early in the process. We like to bring a contractor in early so that we know how much things are going to cost. We don't want to spend, you know, a bunch of your money producing drawings that we don't really have the funds for. So what we want to do is bring in a contractor early, he's going to help us, you know, gut check the pricing as we design, you know, he'll be giving us price and feedback, so we, you know, we can track the pricing to what you guys want to spend, and then we kind of know where we are as we go through the process, and then we don't have to, you know, have us redesign something because it's too expensive. We want to make sure that, you know, we're defining to what the community does need and what makes sense for the project. So those are kind of the next steps that we're working out here.
Thank you so much, Audrey and Dawn, this is a great project for our city. This has been, been worked on for quite some time, over a year, I would imagine, I believe, something like that. The grant process is, is lengthy, and six hundred thousand dollars to, to ask, and you don't have to pay it back, that's an amazing thing. So that goes in at the eleventh on Thursday. And in looking at it, the grant writer is still thinking that we're in a favored position for this, because of the main things that we're doing, continuing the education, adult education, job training, and this is great for our city. Thank you very much for sharing that information.
What would you maybe refine?
Source urbanism?
Would the city have to match any of the plans? Would the city have to match any of the plans?
The budget for this is, is definitely matching, there's different things that go along with that. We're just looking at what, what was being designed for us at this one thing. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have two resolutions before us about the Mountain Spring Project, again, a project that's been been worked on for quite some time. And this resolution is kind of the final steps, which is fantastic, to get this thing going. First resolution is to transfer the property ownership to, or the property to the Manchester Development Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just have one resolution.
Oh, it's only one?
Yes, sir, the other resolution for the Development Authority. This is the resolution to transfer it to the Development Authority, and the Development Authority will pass their motion to sell the law to the Development.
I had two resolutions.
There's another one in there, I think, and you'll put in for your information, but it's for the Manchester, you were at the top of this for the Manchester Development Authority.
Okay. So it is the transfer of the property to the Manchester Development Authority, and they're going to be able to sell that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, it's actually only about shushot thirty acres of the, they're taking it down in phases.
The first section.
Mr. Burke's here and said he's ready to get going, and then it's the first few pieces he identified, so this is the first step in kicking it off.
We've been waiting on this for twice on time, and it's here, exactly here, this is, this is definitely needed. Do I have a motion on, on the transfer of the real property? So I have a second on, second motion. Do you have a second and a motion on the resolution to transfer the property? Those in favor? And the motion carries to transfer that property. Now that we have all any old business going on, okay?
Do not add, Mr. Mayor, that I abstain for the minutes, I just don't have enough information on the project to.
And I'd be happy to meet with you next week if you want.
That was nice. Good question. All right, are there any new businesses to be brought forward? All right. That means I get the four again. Thank you for coming. This is a, a very unique time in the history of Manchester. You know, in every city, there's had, there can be great growth, there can be great sustained growth, and in every city that I've been in, large and small, some factors that we really didn't count on or, or foresee change everything. The selling off of, of our manufacturing to other countries devastated cities, large, small, and tiny, if I put us in that category, because we depended on those, on those industries. We had three major industries that we depended on, and that paid for so much in growth and sustain of our city. When those go, we are in the same boat as thousands of other cities in our country. What do you do next? And so we're in a situation that we have to come together as an entire community to decide what new Manchester we want to build. It's based on, on our past, it's based on our buildings. I don't believe in tearing down any of our historic buildings, because, well, I love the brickwork and I know how expensive it is to make it, it's almost impossible. So therefore, together, us deciding, what, we're, we're in a unique position to cast a vision of what will be, and what we would like to see as a council is for the next fifty, for the next hundred years, they're going to go, this is the day things started to change for the better. And that's what I would like for this city. I'd like to open up the, the floor to comments by the, the city council.
Are we talking about this in old business?
No, no, this is your comments.
Were you just skipping over that?
No, we, we don't have old business to, to discuss.
As it. Well, I have some stuff that was, I have some old, even though I knew I have old business, is that allowed?
We would need to, let's look at that, there would be a, a workshop session that's coming up, and that way we can put that in proper order for our, for our news.
All right, okay, no problem. Well, I would like to say that it's just an absolute honor to hold this. Um, well, um, I would like to say that, um, it's just an absolute honor to hold this seat on behalf of the citizens of Manchester. I don't take it lightly, it's an extraordinary honor. Um, we got a lot of work to do, we got a lot of work to do. I look at this position of city council as an opportunity, um, to serve the people. It is a public service, um, position. It's a position where the public is the boss. We have to check in with the bosses. We have to make sure that we are doing a job that they are satisfied with, that we have processes in place that can be tested, that can be evaluated by us, by the public. Um, the people are not happy, and they have a lot of reasons not to be happy. Um, I like the fact that we're gonna bring all of these buildings, but the people are first, and we have to understand that. The people in this community have been asked to carry the burden of incompetence, the burden of hostility coming from their own city officials, the burden of financial mismanagement allegedly. And so this isn't gonna be a situation where we could just bring, bring all of these new and flashy things, and that's just gonna change what has happened. Our people are downtrodden, they're hurting right now. They are voiceless. You know, it gets to a point where, when you try to go through these processes that are put into place by the city hall, and you're met with disrespect, you're met with anger, you're met with inconsistencies, you're met with lack of communication, and then no one's there to explain that, no one's there to take accountability. No one's there to say, how can I help? Or to just, where's the humanity? What is government without humanity? And so I'm here to restore those things and to make sure that we are giving the people the best government possible. Not because they deserve it, but because that's what they're paying for. They're paying for excellence, and when we don't achieve that, then we have not done our jobs. I want it where Manchester is somewhere where we can all feel proud to belong to, where we can feel proud to invite our friends and families here, where we could say, hey, this is, you know, this, this, this is, this is our town. You have people here who have stayed here. And so honestly, if you offer them to leave, they take it. And that's the honest truth. We have people who are doing amazing things out in the world. Manchester birthed them, they raised them, they've gone out and done, done great things other places, and don't, and won't come home to give us those talents back. This is a hostile environment. And that's something that we have to understand, and we can't keep denying it. We can't keep gaslighting the people. They are saying this to us. This right here? I'm gonna carry this, because these are all the complaints that I took off of their plate and put onto mine. These are complaints, concerns, and questions. These don't get heard because we don't have a process for hearing these. But how do you come to work and not deal with this? Because this is the job. This is the job. So I'm not anti anyone. I love everyone, but I am anti unprofessionalism. I'm anti hostility. I'm anti lack of communication. We have to have the very, very highest of ethics here. People don't trust us. You can bring shiny things here, but if I don't trust you, it just seems like, who is this benefiting? This has to be a trusting relationship, a nourishing relationship, a loving relationship. And we gotta figure out how to do that. We have to get processes in place. All of these departments, you have to get your processes up, and they have to be tested, stress test. They need to be tested on a daily basis so that we know they work if a crisis were to happen. We've had water that's been brown for a month. There has been no mass communication to the public as to why that is. We call, they say it's safe, but who wants to drink brown water? I don't care what you tell me, I'm not giving that to a kid. So haven't heard anything from the utility department, haven't heard anything from city hall, haven't heard anything from city manager, haven't heard anything, but it's okay to drink. Now, are we expecting the citizens to pay regular price for something that they can't even use or consume? When the water bill comes, they're expected to pay that. How do we explain that to them? You know? So, um, we have to reimagine what it means to govern people, to be in a partnership with the public. And, um, that was my message to the people, and that's why they elected me. And it was just an honest conversation. I knew they were hurting, I heard them, I went there to listen. We have to listen, we have to get very, very, very close to the problem. I cannot trust that you care about something if you're not close to it. You cannot diagnose a problem when you don't wanna go near it, and that's what the public is feeling like. The city is dirty, we have mattresses, we have potholes, we have trees that are growing over the power lines. And it's been that way for years, years. We have streets that we won't even ride down because we're afraid that on a rainy day or windy day, a limb is just gonna fall on your car, and then who's gonna pay for that? Try calling the city and making a complaint about anything in your yard or on the street, or curb, or sewer, or anything like that. Try that. They, they, this is what they do every day. And it gets to the point where they just stop trying and they give up. And how can the person who's financing this be left feeling like that? They're the ones that's paying the salaries. They're paying for mortgages in this room, they're paying for car notes, they're sending kids to college, people's kids to college on the public's purse, and we can't get professionalism? We can't, we, we're ask, they're asking for the bare minimum, and that's disgusting that they have to ask for that. So I'm here and I'm willing to work with everyone, but please understand, it is gonna be with the highest of ethics. We're gonna have to work very, very hard, and we're gonna have to get processes in place. Processes, I don't know how you run anything without a process, because without a process, every day you show up to a crisis, to a fire, and you don't know who to blame. So that, that, that has to be done. So whatever we have to do as far as evaluating, everyone, everyone, every process, every aspect of what we do here has to be evaluated. And if it's not working, we have to make some hard decisions, because what I believe, last thing, is that when things don't work and people aren't involved, it's because those people aren't making it work. Someone's obstructing it from happening. So if you're doing that, you don't belong in public office. The public doesn't have time, the public doesn't have the patience. These people have lives, they have children, they have bills, they have dreams, they have, you know, they're stressed out. They shouldn't have to go home and then call up here to see, to figure out why we're not doing our job. That's what we're here for. We need to understand what our responsibilities are as a council. And these department heads, they need to understand what their responsibilities are as department heads. This can be a beautiful thing if everyone just does, if they just do their jobs. That's all that, that's all that, the chart is there, it's very clear. The processes are actually there, they're very clear. So, um, those are my concerns. Listen, I'm all in. I'm here for the people. I'm here for the people, I was elected by the people. I'm not here for this title. I was very uncomfortable seeing my name on a sign with a title, because that's not my personality. I'm here as a humble public servant, and, um, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. And if you see me, you can approach me, I have a cell phone number, it's gonna, it's on, and I'm gonna be available twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five to the public. I have an email, I'm gonna find somewhere to get some office space, that, maybe you guys can take me when that gets up. I'm gonna be present, because, listen, when you're tasked to do a job like this, hey, this is very serious, because we have, we affect the livelihoods of people, we affect how people feel about their environment. That's huge, that's a, that's a biological thing. Uh, you could ride down the road and start to feel disgusting, just, it could just ruin your whole day just looking around. We should be motivating people, we should be an inspiration to people. And so I didn't mean to carry on, but ladies and gentlemen, I'm happy to be here.
Nikki, you are here. You are part of this council, and I'm so thankful that you stepped up and served.
Okay, um, my name's Dan Wildworth, and I ran, um, in the late eighties for a couple of terms, and, um, I guess our biggest accomplishment back then was the fire station on North Carriest Street and Russell Whitehead at Restful. I'm very concerned about the water situation. Uh, we'll discuss that a little bit later, uh, in a meeting, but, uh, I ran again because of my concerns for the city of Manchester. I, I'm born in Manchester, grew up in North Springs, moved back to Manchester. Uh, I, I love it, I wanna see it succeed. Uh, back in the eighties, when I was on council, Manchester was running strong with three big industrial plants. And, uh, we, we just didn't foresee, as, as many communities did, the failure of companies to keep their plants in smaller towns. And, uh, I hope we can get back to some of the days where we do have some performer coming back in, uh, developments like Mountain Springs, uh, looking to bring extra people in. I represent all the citizens of Manchester, I was elected from, uh, District Two, but, uh, it doesn't matter. If you've got a problem in your district and you think I could, can help, you may know. And, uh, we'll, we'll certainly see what we can do, but, uh, I'm grateful to be, uh, sitting on this council, uh, and looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you.
All right, I wanna, uh, thank and welcome, uh, Councilmember Dan Wildworth, Councilmember Tamek Lo, and, and, and Mayor Tremble. Thanks, thanks to each, I'm looking forward to serving with these individuals. I wanna thank the public for, uh, bringing me back to my District One post for, for a second term. So this is my co-chair's second term, and I appreciate the vote, appreciate your, uh, vote support. I wanna thank each of you for coming today. This is, this is quite, quite the, the crowd, and I hope this is the last time that we see, um, come in to kinda, kinda see what's going on. We definitely need you, and we, we, we up here to serve, as, as we, Councilmember Lo mentioned, uh, that's exactly why we're here. I wanna thank, thank Mr. uh, Mr. Griff for, for expressing your, your thoughts. I appreciate you bringing them, don't make that the last time. If you ever have anything, call on any of us, we'll, we'll definitely be looking into your concern. I know we didn't mention it before, but we, we urge you loud and clear, and we'll definitely be looking into that concern. Uh, looking forward to serving, and like I said, we, we got some hurdles, man. We, we got a lot that's, that's gotta happen, um, to, to make this city a great city as it has been before. A couple of things, I'll just keep mine short, but a couple of things I do wanna kinda work on. All the things that we've kinda talked about in totality, we'll, we'll talk about them, I guess, as a, as a council. Uh, we got four seats, uh, filled, we got one coming pretty soon. And, uh, we'll, we'll definitely have to have some of the hard conversations about stabilizing and solidifying our, our finances. Uh, that, that's a talk that I'm sure we'll be having, we gotta fini-, uh, finish up finances, uh, by July, so that's something we'll be doing. Standardizing procedures has to happen, so that's one of the ones that we'll, we'll for sure be working on. Uh, increasing capacity, both affordable and, and residential homes is kinda what we're talking about. Some of the things are just simple economics, and we'll, we'll, we'll be talking about that, and, and we'll be glad to talk to the public about helping make that make sense so that everybody knows, you know, why some things are the way they are, or why we kinda need to make some of these moves. We got a lot of old homes in some parts of the town that, that generate net, that generate next to nothing. So, you know, those things have to be addressed, and we, we, we'll be working on those in the upcoming weeks and months and year. We wanna improve the offerings by our youth and as well as our elderly, so thank y'all for that, and that's nice to see. Nice to see some of y'all young folks. Y'all gonna be our leaders of the future, so, right, right believe in it. So, so thank y'all for your interest in coming, and I, I, I thank whoever, Ms. Lo, I thank you. Y'all, y'all three were the reason I pointed at one of my, one of my classmates, one of my friends over here and told him, they, they're here to see them, this is my second term, but, but I'm glad to see the youth, for sure, for sure. Y'all gonna be our leaders of the future and wanna see you back as much as you can, okay?
We bring them everywhere.
We hope.
We bring them everywhere.
I saw y'all fussing out, but that's okay. And, and lastly, I, I, I wanna, I wanna tell y'all, we, we're working really hard. I, I, we're working hard to restore the public trust. Um, I, I've seen, I see trash on the streets. I mean, I, I see, you know, some of the changes that have happened. We, we are gonna work as a group diligently to, to restore the public trust, so this does become a new place that, a, a better place for us to live, working place. And I'll just sum it up at that, and that's all I have, thank you.
I have to say, can you not be excited listening to this? This is, uh, this is, you know, it, it's a wonderful council that we have here. And, uh, I challenge us not to sit and look inward, but to sit and hunt those problems down. We have, I love the statue.
Yeah, they, we don't have a look for them.
It's like the rest of the year, that. How can we respond if we do not know? How can we respond if we're not the ones going out and looking and talking and engaging to say, what do you need? This is what we have to have. Thank you so much for, for all the comments. This is an unusual time for it, because you get to rebuild a city twice now, though. Uh, as far as our youth here, you are, thank you so much for bringing them. Unfortunately, a city council meeting is kind of a boring business meeting. It really is, uh, but we do mess a lot of times. It wasn't too bad, did it? Okay, good.
Well, this is, uh, Marywether, Marywether County's only travel baseball team. And these guys are outstanding. They went to the championship game last year, it's gonna start back up this February. And so I'm just really happy to have them here to have seven oh six. Up all over the state of Georgia, the seven oh six, so I'm looking forward to it. Now they come here and practice in the city.
City attorney, do you have a-
No, sir, I don't. He voted on what we were working on.
That's exactly right. You got what you needed. We're, we're not quite done yet. Uh, our city department's, um, uh, chief couch, can you bring us up on anything?
I just wanna update you on the, uh, the December tenth, uh, murder investigation. And Mr. Shannon Smith, um, we contacted the GBI and asked them to come in and assist us with the investigation. And they have, uh, we've made an arrest, uh, in the case, uh, and probably already aware of that because of, uh, the media and everything, but, uh, an arrest was made with a nineteen-year-old Manchester man, uh, Darius Williams. Uh, he was arrested, and, uh, he's currently in the, uh, Marywether County Jail at his town. We are still, uh, looking into, uh, maybe more arrests being made in the case. We are still, uh, uh, looking into, uh, maybe more arrests being made in the case. It is still an on, ongoing investigation, so.
Thank you. Thank you. We're working in coordination of GBI. I might have some three minute time.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Only thing I have is, uh, we were notified last week. We have the recipients of a seventeen thousand dollar grant. From the, uh, State of Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council micro grant for first responders. Which will be used for, uh, PPE for firefighters. So it's a, it's a hundred percent grant with no match.
A PPE.
Personal protection for turnout year. And it is a hundred percent with no match.
I, I just don't like a lot of acronyms. To keep up with these things, N B A D D. Okay, Mr. Sam, tell us something about this water, would you please?
I would, uh, I would like to introduce Cady Kelly with J and T Environmental. And, uh, he can go into detail a little more on, uh, on what's going on.
I do believe you have everyone listening.
Um, so we have managed the city of Manchester's, um, water and wastewater for the last couple of years, um, and over the mat. But basically we were called in, um, during the plant upgrade. The plant was in pretty bad shape and was not running real great. And it was during the time where the city had made corrective action to, um, do upgrades to the plant, as far as that goes. Um, Hallstater and Associates was engineering. They were brought in and made the recommendations and the plant was going, um, brought up. Manchester has a particularly unusual plant. Um, most plants around the state that deals with surface water, um, has an extended basins and, um, big filters and all. And it takes about, from the time I get it into the plant, in a typical plant, it takes about six to eight hours. From the time I bring it in to the time I send it out to treat it, Manchester takes about twenty minutes. That is not a whole lot of time for me to be able to do water treatment as far as that goes. These are called microflock filters, which the city of Manchester currently has. We pull the water out of the reservoir. We inject those chemicals. It goes through, basically, they call it a clarifier. It's just a bunch of plastic beads and it comes up through and then we put it through charcoal sand. And we send it back out. Um, typically, we can do everything we need, um, to keep it in there. What happened was is the city's reservoir, actually, they called it destratification. It's basically, everybody knows heat rises, as far as that goes. Well, the bottom layer of the reservoir got hotter than the top layer of the reservoir due to water temperatures. And when it did, it did like this. So it's like taking a Coke and spinning it and sending it up there. So everything on bottom was pushed up. So we had all the organics come up from the bottom reservoir and all the natural occurring elements, so iron, manganese, all that kinda stuff, just naturally in the water out there. Unfortunately, the city had about two years ago, the property right next to the water plant was clear cut. Um, Sam remembered this, um. A few other people from the city that actually came down to look, but every time it rained, it would turn the city, I mean, turn the reservoir orange. And all the debris washing was there. We contacted E P D. We did everything we were supposed to. The city of Manchester's plant's really only designed to handle water, this dirty, uh, this is a scale. It's called an N T U scale, is what it's called. Um, typically, that scale is somewhere twenty or less is what the city of Manchester are doing. I had a hundred to two hundred that we were having to treat. Um, we spent nights on the floor, sleeping in there. We had low water. I mean, we never ran out, but we ran it low as far as that goes. Um, it took a lot and it took about three days to figure out how even treat the water, whether it was even safe to send out before we sent some out. We were able to get it done and all that. Well, all the, uh, the reservoir had settled out. All that settled to the bottom. When the reservoir flipped this time, all that's been sitting on the bottom, not at the top, and we had to re-treat all that. So the water coming into us was particularly harsh to treat. It wasn't high in dirt, but it was high in organic material. Um, the reason we have to work so hard to get the organic material out is because it reacts to chlorine, causes byproducts on there. So we gotta get that organic material out first and foremost to make sure it's safe to send out. Second thing is the iron and manganese. Iron and manganese is plain as simple as a naturally causing thing and without removing it, that's what your water looks like. Or darker. This is, this is not the city of, uh, Manchester's picture. This is just a, uh, stopover. But this is worst case scenario, what iron and manganese. It actually looks like a drinking water, if it's not treated. It's a secondary contaminant by the state of Georgia, which you have maximum containment level goals. Goals are just set by the state of Georgia, being said, but that's just not a health problem. It's just, it doesn't look good. So the yellow water doesn't look good. It doesn't taste good, but it doesn't pose a health risk, as far as that goes. You can see this from the E P D. Um, um, be more than happy to give you their number. I'll be more happy to give you my card anytime and y'all can call me. That's my cell phone number. Here's all my business card on there. And y'all can call me directly whenever y'all have a problem and I call the city, how do they wanna do it? And I'll talk to you and explain to you or even come out and I'll test the water. We do everything we can for the city as far as that goes. What we ended up having to do is I went and found three hundred pounds of baking soda and added to y'all's reservoir, is what I did. And that helped with it. We now order it by the pallet load and we're treating the reservoir with baking soda coming in. Baking soda, what it does is, is it makes the water, um, be able to absorb an acid. All our chemicals are acid on the pre-treatment side. So without the baking soda, it doesn't work. And that's what we found, found it did. Um, we actually called all over the state. We called Georgia Water, um, the city of Barnburg, um, which is about forty minutes of here. Um, called and said, hey, we had this similar problem about eight years ago. They still fight it every day. This is what worked for us. They were, they gave the city the chemical, the trial, and it seemed to work actually as far as that goes. Um, we've also talked to Augusta, the city of Augusta, and they helped with it because they've had the same similar problem. So what we're doing now is we're gonna continue to feed baking soda. Your numbers are below the limit. Um, right now, you've got about a point zero zero eight on there and it says zero three is the limit that we set out. So y'all are well below the limit now. The water is crystal clear, leaving the plant. We just gotta get the old bad water out. And I say bad as discolored. It's not health. Um, there's a website you can go to. It's called G A Drinking Water dot net. Um, and if anybody needs that, um, information, again, um, I'll grab some cards out of my truck and I'll leave them with the city here. Um, I'll leave them here after the meeting and now I'm more than free to call me. By G A Drinking Water dot net, you go and it'll ask the system name. You put Manchester. It pulls up every single test that I send out for every month. And you can go to this store. You can see your lead and copper results. You can see back tea results. You can see for any system in the state of Georgia. You wanna see what Woodbury's doing. I've been Woodbury. It's a free site from the state of Georgia that sends out. And it's basically to keep us monitored. It's an open record back. You just put it in there and you pull up anything you see. Any test we've done, radiological, for example, is on there as well, too. So with that being said, um, with the city being a unique water plant, it is a lot harder for me to treat. And we were there Christmas Day. We were there New Year's Day. We were there all during the week that night. We communicated with Sam, good, um, good bit. Um, it's my fault for probably not communicating better with the council or the mayor. Um, new people were involved in there. Um, I should've done a better job, I guess, of getting it to y'all. But I did, I was trying to keep up with some of the city, so I did report to Sam as much as I could. But like I said, if there was a problem with it, we would've sent out, um, I think y'all are involved with Code Red or the. The City of Redding is what it's called now. I send out an alert from City of Redding whenever we have a problem or it's a boil water notice. We also post it on city hall or anything like that. I was not gonna send that out because the water was still safe. It just doesn't look good. Um, and I apologize.
I think that was the problem, uh, people not knowing. One of the water was brown. One of the water was yellow. And, uh, I, I've dealt with some of the last ten years. There are a lot of things like the charts you just mentioned, it's printed in newspapers. There's some things, I mean, I still don't understand. And, you know, the average person, you can look that in the paper. It looks nice. It says the water's okay. But nobody knows what those numbers are. I think we just need more education about putting water in a, a, a vehicle to get the word out when it is a problem.
So what we can do is, like I said, I'll communicate with Sam and them and, um. Um, Angel, you're the city clerk or municipal clerk? City, okay. I can communicate with her. Sorry, I've dealt with Angel for the city of Woodbury, so I didn't know what her actual job might have was here. Uh, but yeah, I'll communicate with them as far as that goes. And if we do have something coming out, I will send out an email as far as that goes. Um, where y'all can post it either on the bulletin board out front or some, or anywhere that y'all want to on there. But, um, what I did is for the council and the mayor, I've actually printed out some stuff and there's a case study in there that basically talks about destratification and this guy. All kinds of scientific terms that we use and numbers and stuff like that, so.
We have a few more copies of this.
I, I do have a few more copies if anybody, I don't want to. So, but it's, it's a lot of, I'll be honest with you, boring stuff. And basically, all it comes down to is the reservoir flipped over and all the organic matter come to the top and we had to treat it. If y'all had a longer detention time where I could work with it, I could've got it done faster, but I didn't do so to the plant that I have currently. So like I said, it's taken care of now. The trees have grew back by the reservoir, so hopefully no more, uh, runoff in there. We should be good to go, but if y'all have any questions whatsoever, or if y'all'd like me to come test at the house or anything like that, we're more than free to do it. My operator's there fifteen hours a day typically, so we're there whenever y'all need it.
Thank you so much. Sam, did you have a, one more thing or?
Also, just to let everyone know that, uh, we did open the underpass. We've got it back open and, uh, and traffic's free flowing.
Okay, good.
That's, that's pretty raw and.
Well, if you haven't noticed, uh, one of the things that, uh, we have charged to us, to, uh, council people is to, um, communicate. Uh, we, we're specifically gonna be looking at how we can have two-way communications where people can be heard and we can give answers. And also, things like this, alerts for various things. You need a place that you can go and find that. So that is, is, uh, one of our higher priorities. In fact, to give you a little, little, uh, heads up, we, uh, as a council are, are addressing, uh, nine areas of a fast strike. What needs to be done quickly, efficiently and immediately. And, uh, to get them started at the very least and to move forward with them so that we can handle some of the more severe issues in our city. So, um, I do, I wanna make an announcement of a special work session called for Thursday at eleven A M. Uh, now, if you really want the fun, that's where the fun is. Uh, it's at the work session because that's where things, we actually are dealing with things, talking about things. I know it's an, uh, not necessarily an easy time, um, but that'll be about, uh. I, I've told myself two point five hours and if, even if we're not done, we're, we're done. So, yeah, we'll, we'll keep that on the first one. Uh, do I have a, a, an motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor? Alright, our first council meeting is closed.